... To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All in favor?
What are we involved in?
I second Mr. Bonney's motion too.
Would you want to...
July eight, July fifteen.
All of them? All of them, Steve.
Was that who we saw? Did we get July twenty-ninth?
One second for discussion.
Yeah, I just, I didn't see anything about the policy that we wanted to discuss that got asked. Was it BEDH policy that you had on the agenda to be discussed? Is it been out of work or information?
Yeah, I don't remember what it was. I can look it up. I have the things from the last...
It should be, might be, you might want to have it in minutes. It was on the agenda, but I guess if it's just on the agenda, then we're not too...
Yeah, I mean, it's on the agenda since now then.
The discussion turned to, we'd be discussing that tonight. Hopefully we'll get on the old business. Remember the policy, Mr. Tracy, that we talked about? Was it BEDH?
I don't know the actual letters. The school board used to be...
Does it use to be in the...
Well...
It's on the agenda, so I don't think it needs to be in the minutes. It is there.
Well...
It was on the agenda.
But it was discussed at the meeting, so it probably shouldn't be in the last.
That's the only thing I'd like to see in the meeting. Just to include that small bit of discussion.
Are you going to change your motion without our member?
Yeah, I have another problem.
Okay.
Now, what's the policy?
Well, I wanted to make sure that we...
This is school board, like the school board email or whatever.
E H G?
E H G? Let's go.
I H G in the twenty-ninth?
All in fa- all in favor, everybody still?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Public comment?
Here. Um, I was wondering if the reading night that Mrs. McMullin used to organize, if they're gonna have someone take over that. They, um, they didn't do it this past school year. Obviously, Mrs. McMullin retired, so I didn't know if there was anyone who's gonna step up. A teacher or does anyone know? Mr. Gregoire?
No, you make up pretty good pasta, isn't it? Struganona?
Cook the pasta? No.
We got pizza. It was not even a struganona. That night, so...
I don't know.
I don't need information on that.
Can you, can you get any information for us?
Contact Mary.
Okay.
I believe it did have a person.
I'm not sure if that was the same. I don't believe it was the same.
I don't think so.
We had a list that it wasn't exactly the same, but it was a list.
But it's not the same.
Different person posted it, so...
Priscilla?
Uh, could, we have an update on the whole Ralph matter. You brought it up in public, so I think the public has a right to know what the, what transpired.
I'm gonna take that under advisement from the chairman chair. So, the board, do you want to respond or not?
He's not protected, so keeping it in the wraps and behind closed doors is absolutely not acceptable.
So, to the board?
Right, we have to, we have to bring it out, so...
Do you want to do this now? Or do you want to put it on as an agenda item? Because we really do need to check with the...
The board has the updates, and the board can respond as they will.
I think it's a pretty interesting situation, Priscilla. We spent a lot of money having certain things looked at by the attorney. Certain things cost taxpayers a lot, a whole lot of money. I think it should be discussed at some point as well.
Oh, you brought it up in public. You're not protected, so it kind of has to...
I'm not trying to protect me. I think it should be discussed.
Well, the attorney did, I don't know, can I? I don't have my, my permission.
I would say that the people that initiated the action should address the situation.
I have no problem addressing the situation. Um, we put it through the attorney. The attorney gave us her reasoning as to why we should not take it to Superior Court. I don't have the notes in front of me, or I would certainly give you everything that they gave us. That's acceptable, yes?
Just call that as an admission.
I have from the attorney, Bobby Duke, county attorney, not from your attorney.
Does she not have it from her attorney?
Nope.
Okay.
She won't be receiving it from our time as well.
Okay.
Can you give me an overview of what happened, even though you don't send me the document?
We certainly can, and I would love to speak on it, Priscilla, but without, can we put it on for the next agenda?
Yep.
Because I don't have my notes, and I want to be clear on everything that was discussed.
I have no problem with that. If you're willing to let the public know what transpired, I don't...
I have no problem with that. I just want to...
Sure.
Okay. All right, I'm not trying to put you off. I just don't have...
I understand.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
Bottom line is, Priscilla, the tax, the public won't spend any more money on the issue.
Mr. Tracy?
In his opinion.
Mr. Tracy, could you put that on the agenda?
Also, the attorney's opinion.
The attorney had conflicting opinions and a lot of, so why don't we wait and have a whole discussion then?
We'll get it on the agenda for the discussion at the next meeting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mary?
Is there anything planned for the students' practice school, first day of school, first week of school, special cookout, ice cream?
Hey, can you speak on that? Do you know anything?
Okay.
Okay.
I just wanted to thank the board for supporting my eighth grade student back in, I think, May. Mr. Gregoire advocated on behalf of us to get one of my eighth grade girls to DC for competing in the National History Day competition. We had quite a memorable trip, and thanks for hearing us out back in the spring.
Did we get results on that? Is that what you do?
Um, I mean, she didn't place at the national level. We would have heard about that immediately. I'm hoping to get the judging sheets back in early September, and then I'll know from the judges, like, what about her paper on Rockefeller was not up to snuff, but second place in the entire state of New Hampshire is something to brag about too, so...
That's great. That's great.
Pretty happy about that.
Superb. Heading off to Rooster right here.
Right on, yeah.
That's great.
Judy Nason is here tonight. She's gonna speak to us on the SAU Withdrawal Planning Committee.
You received, um, the half and I believe also electronically a copy of the report, and I'm here tonight to answer any questions you may have, um, or any part of it you want to review. And the planning committee is also asking for you to make a motion of support for the report of the Wakefield Planning Committee, and ask you to sign that to go along with the, um, report to the Department of Education.
I have clean copies with nothing on the back. That should be a separate sheet. May I approach the board? Certainly. There's three copies. I don't know if you wanted any of your own files, just as long as I get one back.
Great, thank you. Bonnie, sorry?
I guess after reading the report, I just want to thank you all that were with the Withdrawal Committee for all the time and effort that you put in. The, it, um, is wonderful. It, one question I had is where my photocopies don't always, like, come through. Are the headings more clear on the one that's going to the state?
Yes.
Okay.
Everything's clear on the one that's going to the state.
And there's a few errors you probably found in here that Priscilla...
Has it corrected?
I found a couple. And said that with giggles.
This is here?
Um, I had just one question on page thirty-six. Can you explain to me the twelve hundred special ed? Because where is the, I guess I just want to know where the seventy thousand dollars is. I didn't see it.
Okay, we're combining the Student Services Director at the SAU position with the Special Education Coordinator position in your school.
Okay, so it's only gonna, is that like a stipend then?
No.
The nineteen six thirty-one?
That's what will be added to the salary in the school.
Okay, what's added to salary?
So, if you want to look at that budget, you'll see that we have a transition budget. The three thousand dollars is to transfer everything from the SAU we milled up here to Technical Services. The twenty-five thousand is for renovations of the modular. The thousand is for advertising for those positions. Uh, the six thousand dollars is for a new server. The twelve hundred dollars is for the appraiser for the listed assets. The six thousand dollars is for superintendent search.
And that equals the forty-two, too?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. If you have any questions on the yearly budget, I'd be happy to answer. I think you guys have done a great job of making it very clear.
I'll make a motion to approve and support the plan with thanks to all who served on the planning committee. Great job by all.
I'll second that. And again, you guys did a fabulous show, everyone who was on there. All in favor?
Aye.
Nine?
Judy, did you tell him who was willing to sit on the transition team?
Well, it's in the report. There's the four community members. Everything on.
All right, well, I'll vote in the affirmative then.
Who was sitting on the transition team? The five, the four community members, Steve Royal, myself, Priscilla and Laura. And then we'll have two school board members. Getting these to sign them.
Yeah.
The superintendent.
Dave, I know you're chomping at the bit over there.
Um, public hearing is on Monday night?
Correct.
Uh, I cannot find any documentation online as to what the public hearing is about. Documentation, uh, is anything on the website to review? Or how do we request, um, the documentation?
It's posted on the SAU website, on the first page of the...
Is it?
All meetings are posted, and also the report is posted on the website.
It is on the...
I saw it today.
Sorry.
Um, and there are hard copies at the town hall and the SAU. And the meeting is at six o'clock on Monday night, and that will be in the multipurpose room in the...
Castle House.
It's under public notices right on the webpage.
I'm sorry?
It's under public notices right on the first page of the webpage?
Okay.
If you go to, um, School Board, drop-down menu will come down, and there's also all our minutes and agendas under the Withdrawal Committee.
Thank you, Judy.
And we had our public hearing the other last Monday night.
I saw it. I watched it. It could go very long. It's online, if you want to have a look. If you want to peruse that one. Administration, enter reports, Nathan.
Are you gonna sign that?
Of course we are.
We just...
Have to do it front of us.
We just needed to go into the report, that's all.
Do it right now.
Great, thank you.
Yes.
Didn't want it to get lost in the shuffle of paperwork.
We're gonna keep a copy for the minutes, if you don't mind.
That's great.
Yeah, I got a couple. We, uh, had a Budget Committee meeting last night, and the Budget Committee had some questions.
Yeah.
On page fourteen, the special ed, the salary, they're concerned about the biker and retirement, the amount of the biker and retirement compared to the salaries. So, if you could come up with that. It does appear to be that they're off, because as you go down to the nurse... If you go down to the, the biker, you have the nurse at forty-one, three, five, seven, and the biker is thirty-three, sixteen, sixty-eight, so... Can you look at those, Nathan? And they appear, it does appear that they need, there needs to be an adjustment on those. Because if you're increasing salaries, you're gonna be increasing your biker and retirement.
I have a look at some of those for you. I started to, well...
And the other issue that the Budget Committee had was, um, on the School Board, page nineteen, um, with legal services. I didn't have, I had, I didn't have my, you had sent the seven eight, um, expense report to the Budget Committee?
Yes, I did.
I didn't have that with me last night. I had tonight's expense report, so I couldn't compare the two, but there, um, you had zero amount made, remaining in the July eighth, and then a balance of fifteen, five, nine, two, three, five on the August thirteenth.
Yep, and that is due to, um, during the time period between the seven eight and eight thirteen, we spent less than we thought we were going to in legal fees, so we unencumbered what was remaining. Which, we ended up only spending twelve thou, or, I'm sorry, two thousand of that seventeen that we had encumbered. So, according to the line, we're, we only spent twenty, I think it was twenty-nine thousand for the year, so we had an extra fifteen.
And that's okay to do, to encumber, once it's encumbered?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
No problem. All right, could you, um, when you get those answers, could you bow those to the Budget Committee, please?
Absolutely.
Would you?
Can I just ask one thing? There's a fifty thousand dollar difference between the bottom line and both of them, and we just kind of want to know where that difference is.
Specifically where it is?
Yeah, if you would, if you wouldn't mind.
Okay, absolutely.
Thank you.
Were there any other questions on the final reports for FY fifteen?
I don't know. You, you're still waiting on the E rate, correct?
That is, that is, um, more or less the only thing I'm waiting for.
Okay.
For the, for FY fifteen.
Okay. Did you have any idea? I don't know.
Um, I have already submitted, I submitted, um, last week to get work. We're just waiting for them to take it back.
Okay.
Uh, Nathan, yeah, I did go, um, back to some of the other biker and retirement also. You may want to just maybe go through and double check them to make sure they're, they're correct. Some of them do look like they, some of the other ones could use an adjustment also.
Yep, I will do that.
So, you could take out a few here.
I also had the, um, the first report for FY sixteen, July expenses. And then I have July's revenue report.
Could you just, um, give a short explanation as to why the revenues really don't meet the grant? Oh, the revenue is showing all negative balances, and grant reviews are all showing positive balances.
Revenues are, um, in the budget, they're in as a negative until we get it, and then it brings it down until it's zero, whereas expenses, they go up. Could I answer your question?
Not really, because, I mean, you have, as an adopted budget, eight million, seven hundred and twenty-three thousand, four hundred and one. I know we're not gonna be getting eight million, seven hundred and twenty-three thousand, four hundred and one on the general fund alone. It's, it's rather confusing, I think, to, you know, for the public's benefit. I mean, you're showing, you know, for a total on the adopted budget of revenue of a negative nine million, three hundred and eighty-four thousand, six hundred and forty-seven dollars and twenty-one cents. I don't expect to be getting nine, more than, almost nine and a half million dollars from the federal government. It's just, it's rather confusing if you look at it, because the revenue coming in from the federal government is all showing negative, but yet you go over to the grant review and everything is showing we're, we're in the positive.
Steve, where, you said nine million, nine point three million?
Page twenty-seven?
Oh, okay. Thought we moved on to the July report. So, you're back in June?
Oh, this is eight thirteen.
Which report are you looking at, Steve? Can you tell us the number in the corner?
For just the federal grants, right, Steve? On page twenty-six?
Oh, right, right.
It's your total amount. You were talking on twenty-seven. It's a nine point three.
Nine point three, revised budget of nine point four. Current period, but then when you go to current period, we're, uh, one million, seventy-five thousand short. But then, amount remaining is only short, uh, one hundred and eighty-four thousand.
The grants part of it's a little confusing, I admit, because, because the federal grants run different from the fiscal year. For example, Title I runs, um, September first to August thirty-first. The, um, adopted budget is how much the grant started with, and that carried, that specific amount carries over every year, even though we haven't spent that much. The reason we haven't spent it is because we have to receive it? No, no, we've spent it and we received it, but because the report only shows the fiscal year, it only shows what we've, it only shows what we've received, what we've spent through that time period. It's not showing what we did in fiscal year fourteen, which is when the grant actually began, some.
Goes over multiple years.
Title, exactly. Title II actually spans three fiscal years.
And what the adopted budget is was actually allocated to us. It's not what we actually might apply for, so there's always a variance within what's been allocated to us and what we actually take in for revenue.
Do we usually apply for more than is allocated?
No, you can't. You can't apply for more than you're, you're allocated.
Oh, so you don't ask for the money, and then they decide how much they're gonna give you?
No. They say here, you have a hundred and thirty thousand dollars in Title I monies, and then you submit an application for how you're gonna spend those monies. And you might submit an application to spend a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, so you already have a ten thousand dollar variance between your grant report and your revenue
That's the way they do it, and the problem is, is what they tell you you're gonna get at the beginning may not be the number you receive at the end, years later. may not be the number you receive at the end, years later.
You get a, you get an annual allocation. And then those, those budgets that, those grants that roll over year to year, you get carryover. And that usually happens sometime mid-year. So you're going to see a variance between your grant overview and your revenues due to the carryover, as well as the adopted budget might be different than what you've actually applied for.
Federal government, that fuzzy math.
Is this still dealing in 2015 with grant money that was allocated? Seven thirty, twelve through thirty-one, fourteen?
Yes. Yeah, because part of it ended up being in fiscal year 15. Because we're still getting monies at the beginning of the fiscal year 15 through August and in some cases up until September.
You want to leave her?
Uh, no, I hit. I got everybody's signature first. We need to get one to the bathroom. Please.
Also have the grant overview, if there's any other questions on that.
That's, that'd be great.
I have the monthly treasurer's report through May 29. And also the debt reconciliation of the general fund through May 29.
Go ahead, Nathan.
I also have the cafe services on final financial report for FY '15.
Motion for treasurer.
Oh, that's right, we can't just skip that. Oh, a favor?
Right. Motion for treasurer.
Treasurer's report for May 29.
Just to accept it?
We have, yeah, we have to approve that. Hi. Sorry, I'll get Michael. Cafe services? Let me go from the now.
Seventeen ninety-nine, that was the final?
Uh, that was budgeted. Uh, the final was fifteen ninety-four.
Second column. So it's showing profit at fifteen hundred.
Yeah, that's actually even better because of positive, positive balance first change.
Not really, we can consider the monies that are missing out on.
Well, yeah. Wait a minute, isn't that, isn't this part of that or no?
No. Is that included in this? You don't have the loss of monies in here?
No.
So you didn't add this to it?
No, it's separate.
Well, then we did. Loss of balance. But a lot better than adding the balance.
Thank you, Nathan. Mr. Tracy, the residency form update?
I just want to give the board prior information to how we're going to tackle the residency forms this year. So we're not assuming through the year. I had the opportunity, I met with the principal Spalding High School to establish a system at Spalding to provide the students with the residency forms as well as a letter from me on the first day of school. I'm actually holding an assembly for all Wakefield High School students where I get an opportunity to speak in front of them, which is the first time in three years, which I'm very happy to do. Sort of welcome them to the new year. And also, at that time, I'll be giving them the residency forms and the letter that they can bring home. And then it comes back to the school where it's kept in the main office, where we will pick those forms up and I'll sign off on those forms just to make sure that we have indicated who has dropped them off and who has not. So in the past, they could either drop them off at the school, at the SAU office, at Paul School, and try and just mainstream it, streamline it, I should say, one drop-off point. And we're in hopes that that would remediate the situation of having to track these down. And spoke with the principal, as well as Superintendent Hopkins, about if we don't have the forms in by October 1st, which is when we do our, we have to submit our beginning of the year enrollments, then we'll, we'll have that, that process of unenrolling them as Wakefield students early on in the year. So that will be in my letter a little bit home to parents as well. So they, they know that they need to get the forms in.
Great.
So you'd be able to hand each student it, and look them in the eye and say, "Thank you very much for joining us on time." I will have a pile of them. I will stand there and hand each student one. However, I'm looking forward to meeting many of the Wakefield High School students, which I have in the past, but I'll have them all in one place, which I'm happy to be working speaking in front of. It'd be good for the students. Line up like a plume.
Not really.
Steve?
This was actually also discussed at the budget committee meeting last night, the importance of controlling the costs of Spalding and the importance of getting the residency forms in. So the budget committee does have an eye on it and is concerned about getting these in to make sure we're controlling costs.
May I?
Go ahead, Dave.
So the residency forms are given up the first day of school and are to be returned by October 1st? Is that correct?
Yes.
All right. If, if that doesn't happen, I heard, I didn't hear you completely, but you'll start deregistration?
Unenrolling students.
After that particular point in time?
Yes.
Is that what happened that, this year?
Yes. But it was later.
It was, yes.
It was come spring.
So the great, so it wasn't October 1st, so there was a greater, there was a greater grace period this year?
There was, there was a huge.
Like last year?
There was a huge grace period and we're trying to be proactive this year instead of reactive. So we're going to put some new policy into place, a new process, so that this does not occur again and we're not chasing residency forms in September.
I'd like to ask the question, if you didn't, if you didn't get the residency forms back, how many students were attending last year that were not residents of the town?
Mr. Tracy, we didn't have any.
He's all clarified.
It was all, it was all strung out by the end of the year. We didn't have any.
There were no students that attended last year that were not residents of this town?
Not that we know of.
Not by the end of the school year.
Not by the end of the school year, no.
Well, I happened to ask that question of the principal and he told me there were five.
That went to high school?
Or in this building?
That were in this school, in the Wakefield school system.
That might not necessarily be high school students. If you're asking the principal, he doesn't necessarily know the high school members. That would be something we would want to talk to the superintendent in there or our superintendent.
I'm, I'm talking, I'm talking what the taxpayers are paying for students that attend this town. How many of the students that attended the Paul School or the Rochester High School that were not members of this town?
Last school year, to the best of my ability, I didn't know that we had any students that did not.
According to the administration, Paul School, Paul School had five children.
Could have been the year before.
Okay, regardless of year.
No, because if you catch something, you fix it.
Okay. As a taxpayer, I don't think the taxpayers of Wakefield should be obligated to teach, to fund teaching children that are not members of this town.
And I did hear you say this.
Many years ago, and I think you probably remember, Bonnie, because I think you were on the school board at that particular point in time, we had two teachers that were teaching at the Paul School that were not residents of the town. Their children were allowed to attend the school until, when this was brought up, they, you determined that we would let them finish out their time here until they, they left. And that at that point in time, I believe we said, "We will not allow this to happen again."
Mm-hmm.
Okay? And if it has happened since four, five years ago, then the board is not following the direction and the policy that was set forth at that particular point in time.
I guess, all right, all right. No, I guess what, what we need to do is have Mr. Tracy clarify if this happened, because I, we don't believe it and it's kind of, I, we can't go back and forth unless we all have hard, cold facts. So that's what I want to do. And I'll have Mr. Tracy get us the information and we'll bring it back.
Okay. And I'd like that to go back at least four years.
Can we do that? That's, okay. All right. So can we clarify, were there five students? Just bring it back to us.
Which year?
Last year. Bring it back to us so that we know.
We already know.
I'm sorry.
Situations that have been taken care of.
I understand that, Bonnie, but we're being asked the question. So I want Michael to bring us back the facts or the gentleman, if you don't mind.
I don't.
Thank you. New business. Mr. Tracy.
First item under new business is, this is addressing the items that came out of storage in the school that were placed in the modular. There were several items that were in the modular that were originally in, I believe, was a storage area above the stage in the school and they were brought out here to the modular. And I had Mr. Grebwar and Mr. Byrne went through and separated all the materials as to what is basically trash and then what other resources could potentially be sold or donated. Several of those materials are when we had additional classrooms, like a sixth grade, additional sixth grade classroom, and I believe there's an additional third grade classroom. There were three classrooms and went down to two. So there's classroom sets in there. Majority of the math materials are there, are everyday math materials. And so those are all the materials that we don't use. And then we just have a lot of outdated titles as well in there. And then just some things that just aren't worth keeping, if you will. So that's why I have an here disposal, donation, or sale of materials. We did look at what we could get for some of the materials that are in there. We contacted a publishing company that purchases used books and workbooks and so forth. And we got a quote of $53 for the materials that are in there. So I'm asking the board approval this evening to either dispose of, donate, or sell the materials that are within that modular.
Ralph?
Did you bring an inventory of those items with you?
No.
Could we, as a board, please review an inventory of the items so that we know what's, we're going to decide about? Say how much is it?
Steve?
I don't know if I would agree with that, because we're talking about, because we've reduced the third and sixth grade classroom. We're in the process now of adding a second and third grade class. So what would happen at some point down the road where we have to add a, what was it?
Sixth and third.
What would happen if we had to add another class to those grades? And then we no longer have those materials? Then we have to go out and repurchase the same materials? I don't think it's a great idea, number one. Number two, the everyday math program, the more I look at the Common Core math program that we are now using, I would think that we probably want to look into another math program, because I'm not too impressed with two plus two equals five is reasonable. So I don't know if we'd want to get rid of the everyday ma, math at this point. I, I think we need to look further into getting an additional math program. So, and there were some other materials in there, social studies, that weren't even open.
A lot of them weren't open.
So here we are, we're not teaching US history in, in, in public school. It's, it's just crazy. So I wouldn't be in favor of disposal, donation, or sale of any of it. I think we should find a location for it. I, at this point, this is, this building is proposed to be used as a future SAU. I don't see, we're not going to be using this debt over there this year, correct?
Yes, we are. We had to move a class, we had to move a special education classroom from the school into that room in order to put the additional second grade class in there. So that room will be utilized.
I mean, we, we paid $50,000 for Common Core math. So I don't know how much we paid for the everyday math program, but you're talking about a lot of money. And if we ever have to add any of those grades in the future, we're going to have to buy this material over again, possibly. So I think we're, I think we should find another home for it and hold on to it, because for $53, the taxpayers paid a lot more than $53 for it.
I guess I want to, I want to state again, I was, Spanish has not changed. We threw Spanish books out, you know, and whiteboards. And then we get people who need whiteboards, but yet whiteboards get given away. The desks and, you know, I look at things that, I don't want us to be a throwaway school. Like if it's not, if you don't need it that one year, you throw it away. Or sometimes things get stowed away, just like any house, and you forget you have them. Like that one Christmas present you buy and you tuck away and then you find three years later. It, it happens. But there are great materials over there. And, you know, I look at the sixth grade numbers. I knew that the social studies was sixth grade. There's, the sixth grade numbers are huge. And although our team is superior and does a great job in teaching them, if the numbers increase, we're going to have to have another class there. So that would be something that I would like, really not, I wouldn't feel comfortable getting rid of that. There are some things over there, like borders and things like that. And I know teachers change and they like their own things, but where we're thinking about the kids, there is so much over there that if we put that all out and said, "If you play school at home," you know, the things that aren't complete, they, they like have all the parts or maybe they're just one piece of a puzzle. I know tons of little boys and girls that play school all day and it's an additional learning experience for them. But I, instead of the, I would rather give it to the kids that we're teaching so that they can do it at home, you know, and play and learn at the same time, than I would donate it for $53. And, you know, the science kits over there, if we're not going to use them in the building because they were sample sets and we bought the whole set. And, you know, the science kits over there, if we're not going to use them in the building because they were sample sets and we bought the whole set, I would look to the daycares in town, or, you know, ask the science teachers if they have one family that's super science geeky that does crazy things all the time, and, you know, find someone in the community that might need it. Don't throw it out, just see. You know, that's, I just, I just don't like that throwing out thing. I think if we could put it somewhere, you'd have, it'd be gone in a day if the kids knew they could have it. But the third grade, we have a new third grade, so all those materials will be used that are in there. And then if a sixth grade ever had to come in, I think keeping it for, you know, I know that it gets passe, but keeping it until it is passe, in case we need it, I can't believe that that's such a bad thing.
Ralph?
Ralph?
Could we just maybe put this on the next agenda, on the whole business, and at that point have, well, maybe even before that point, get an inventory of what it is that we're talking about? So I, I would like to have the knowledge of what it is we're talking about. And no clue.
I'll, I'll make a motion that, uh, we, we do not dispose, donate, or sell any of those materials. And along with, I would, yes, I think it'd be a good idea to have an inventory of everything that's over there for future efforts.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Your house, your garage.
Joe, Joe!
Where are we gonna?
Where are we gonna put it?
What about, uh, what, why was it taken out over the storage over the stage?
Because it's organized now. You can actually walk in there and it's not a fire hazard. Things were just...
Down as well, Michael.
It's like opening up a closet, and everything falls out at you. That's how a lot of the storage areas were around here, because there was so much of it. And now everything's kind of organized and where it is and stuff like that, so.
Is there an inventory of everything that's in the storage? So like, say you have a teacher that comes and says, you know, I don't have notebooks for this, or are there supplements that go along with this? Do we have an inventory that you can say, yep, it's in storage so-and-so, or this one, and I'll run up and get it, or you can go up and get it, and it's like, you know, do we have that kind of an inventory so we actually know what's in the building for supplies?
We don't have the staffing for that. I mean, I don't have everything organized like that.
Isn't that how we all have to do it?
Who does?
I mean, we have to do it all. Why don't you guys have to do it here?
That's what I do.
Well, you do, but I, I would love to do it for everybody, but you're talking...
Well, I mean, who, like, who checks in the supplies?
Tammy has that, the front secretary. She has everything, she has everything like that, yeah.
Somebody has a list.
There's a list like that, and then, like, the older stuff, when it comes to, like, Joe, I don't need this anymore, can you put it in storage?
But why don't they need it? Is it because they're choosing not to use it, or could somebody else use it?
I think you're asking the person.
Broken leg tomorrow, I'll see.
I know, I'm asking one person. I'm sorry, Joe. I know.
You can't be asking Joe that information, because he doesn't have the answers. Ralph?
Dry storage couldn't happen in the basement of the school.
I have that basement. It's taken me four years to get that thing cleaned out and ready to go, and there's still dampness down there. Every time it rains, one little corner gets damp. We had talked about putting a dehumidifier down there, there's a little one that's down there, you have to empty every day. Doesn't keep up with it, um, and make a lot of suspensions.
Couldn't, couldn't we drain it? You can drain them, can't you? Put them just, knock the bottom plug out of it, want to attach a hose to it?
You have to blow it up.
You have to blow it uphill, maybe a pump.
There's no, no low spot where it could be drained. Out there are a couple holes down the middle.
Just electrical conduit.
And I think it's a really great idea.
For water, for Tursi, it's, well, that is good.
There are questions. Okay. Mr. Tursi, if we can get that on the next agenda, we'll ask all those questions and more.
Inventory of all usable materials in the modular.
And storage as well.
If we just both not do?
He's doing an inventory and putting it on the agenda for discussion. Yes, Joe?
I don't know if this would be acceptable or not, but I did, because I was concerned about the storage and what was going to happen, um, down here at Eagle Storage. They'll rent us a ten by fifteen for a hundred and twelve dollars a month until we can figure out what we want to do, so that can still become a classroom. So that's going to become a classroom next week. I'm still in the process of moving things, so I don't know if that's anything that could happen, or if you want me to find room in the school, I'll do the best I can find.
What's up?
Wouldn't you have to rent a truck, rent a box truck to put everything in, more storage unit, or, I mean, so it sounds like that you just have, well, maybe not a future sense, but can we look at the basement and see how wet it is? I mean, I did see the pile, but I didn't take, have a look at, you know, what specifically is in there.
Do you still have, like, that box out back that's for storage?
That was for the roofers.
Is it still here, though?
No, from Page Street. They came and picked it up, they have four years.
Let's do a lot.
It may be cheaper to get a dehumidifier.
Or two. Mr. Tursi?
I, we'll provide the inventory of materials over there. Those materials haven't been used for years, so I want to avoid storing things that haven't been used.
How outdated are those materials, and are we going to be, are they going to be usable?
Mr. Byrne went through his specifics of those materials. I'm sure he'd be happy to speak to him.
So the materials that are over on this wall on this side over here were materials that we felt we could just get rid of without any issue. They were incomplete samples given to us when we were shopping for math series, so there's not enough there to keep and use in a classroom or a grade. They had been in there, they're not even worth supplemental services because they're incomplete. It was when we were looking to buy different math series, different math companies had given us books, different book companies. So that stuff is neither paid for nor truly are, they're, they're samples, so we could recycle that. On that side, there was also geography books that are over twenty years old from different countries. Well, they've changed, they're African. The geography books that are more than ten years old, five years old at this point, for different countries are no longer valid. So those are over there. We have dictionaries as well as other, other books. Now, I know dictionaries are dictionaries, but new words are added, and you're still looking at books that are well over twenty years old. Everything over there has copyright of well over ten to fifteen years, or they're samples and incomplete. That's why they're over there. On the back walls, Reading Street, we still use them. Um, that's not something we would give away. We would need to store it. Those were for the extra sets, and if we had things coming in. Everyday math is outdated now. Even if we decided to go back to everyday math, if, and that's what you wanted to use, that stuff is not the correct everyday math. If you're going to buy everyday math now, you couldn't buy that material anymore. That's why we can only get forty-two dollars for what's there, because they discontinued it. They've come up with new series. That's why that was there, and it's, and it's not complete either. Those, those are sections. You would need to get all the workbooks and everything. So what they were saying is you could, they would use some of the stuff, but you couldn't take it all. They would, for the fifty-three dollars, they were only taking like forty books out of everything that was there. And as far as the science stuff, as well as some of the other Reading Street stuff, a lot of that has to do with the fourth grade. They have very limited storage. They were storing what they were using and getting it when they needed it over there. Because they're in a modular very much like this, with fifty students over there, they didn't have the storage. There's not enough storage here, so they were using that spare room at that point. So some of that stuff would be stored. When Mr. Tursi was referring to getting rid of stuff, he was truly referring to the stuff that are the samples and the old stuff, not the things that we would generally keep, uh, such as Reading Street. The only thing that I believe that might be in question would be the everyday math. However, we're not using everyday math anymore, nor have we been. And it is that old, old and outdated information at this point. I understand that math hasn't changed. However, if we, if you were to use everyday math, we couldn't use that material anyway because it's been updated. So that, that is, that is what we'd be looking at. And as far as some of the geography books not being open, I believe you're referring to some of the geography books that were tied to Reading Street. And they're not open because they give you supplemental services that are much larger than you can use when you buy such a big program, and they just didn't, weren't needed at that time, because we were covering New Hampshire geography versus, which is what the state curriculum is versus some of the other stuff.
Fourth grade?
Yeah.
Steve?
Were you using everyday math up until two years ago?
Correct, and they've updated it since then, to.
Align to Common Core.
You're gonna, you're gonna have a hard time with new math stuff going to it, so.
But, but that would be even better, because...
But you can't get the new stuff, you, you can't, you can't replace it, the workbooks.
But that's not aligned to Common Core, we're not, so that would be better for us, because we're not use, we're supposedly not using Common Core.
Bonnie?
I can look at, like, when you say, I understand old books, they're passe, I get that, geography books. I understand those things change, like, science books, plans change, presidents change to keep things updated. But the dictionaries, even if they're old, ask yourself how many kids in the school don't have a dictionary at home, because they Google everything. Uh, that hard copy dictionary is just, that's a learning tool that kids don't always have anymore.
I agree with you, and that's why we're looking at the donating part of it versus...
But, but can't you just, like, put everything out and, like, have a yard sale and, or just have, anything that you want to donate and give away, just put it out and let the kids in the community see if they want it first?
And that's an option. That, that is an option, you know, what, what I'm asking the board is to be able to do something with those materials. You know, Nate, Nate just gave, Mr. Byrne just gave, basically what the inventory is over there. Find us the total number of books and the ISBN numbers and all of that, so he broke it down for you. It's just a matter of, we need to get it out of there, whether it's donated to the, to, through a yard sale or a pickup, or whatever that might be. The things that we can't use, we want to get, we want to get rid of, uh, which could also be recycled. And then there are some things that just are trash that need to get, we need to get rid of.
Ralph?
I think we probably made a motion, approved a motion to get an inventory, so we know what we're talking about. We're talking about a spell. It just seems silly that we've come up with, the board's asked for some action, give us an inventory, so we can know what we're talking about.
Right, I understand that, but I think what their thing is, we don't have any storage, and we need a classroom for the students, so. In a week.
Is it possible for all of us to walk down in the basement after this meeting and see what the water conditions are? Because I believe that's a fairly good spot for dry storage. What I've seen down there.
Steve?
No one's going to tell me that you buy any, any program, whether it be a math program, reading program, social study, whatever program, that you're going to renew programs every two years. To say that we were using everyday math two years ago, but now they're, we, um, updated it to Common Core, so we can no longer use that. You, I, there's no, there's, there's very few, if any, school districts that are updating their programs every two years. I, I mean, pretty much we're using computers for the most part, that, what it seems, so I, I don't, I don't buy the idea, oh, that's two years old, so it's too old, you can't use it anymore. I don't buy it.
Make a motion on that.
Okay. What do we do with it, so the classroom can be still?
We'll find a spot for it.
Fine, yeah, if we can find a spot, that'd be great.
Should, should we take a stroll down the basement? We need to just take a look at the conditions, so we all understand what that may be uses by storage.
Is the school available?
Yeah, we can go right now if you want.
Stop and go.
You're tricked.
Do it, do it after. Nate?
I just want to make a clarifying question, so I know what we have to do, because just doing what we did took four hours. Do you want an itemized inventory of every individual book? That's what I need to know.
Well, you know, if we have ten of this book and twelve of this book, and what they are, and what's the date, you know, that would be nice. It doesn't have to be serial numbers, but it would be nice to have, you know, do we have ten dictionaries that are dated nineteen fifty-two? Um, that type of thing. That, that's what we're looking for, essentially. Yes? Okay.
Just one looks like the other, and you count them off.
I say give the dictionaries out, because dictionaries never update it. I don't care if they're missing words, kids can use them.
I just have a question. When do we expect them to do this? They need it, like, next Tuesday, so the teachers can get in there and get that room. That's ridiculous.
If they can lump off the floor, they can count at the same time, can't they? That's...
We can count, but do we have to, you're, you're asking to look in, at what date they were published. That's ridiculous.
No, 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 we're not asking, we're asking, are they five years old or two years old? We're not asking for the exact publication date.
How are you going to find that out without looking at the publication dates?
And we have to look at one of the books.
I don't necessarily think it's a bad thing to know what you have on hand. And if it's considered extra, then we should just know, the school should know that, and if it...
I understand that.
Well, you don't because you're...
Quite, we're in a time crunch here.
We might be in a time crunch, but just because it hasn't been done in the past doesn't mean that it's not a necessity moving forward. And I would think that if someone says that something's passe and they don't need it in their classroom, that should go on a list somewhere. Each classroom should have an inventory.
That I agree with, but right now we need to deal with this timely fact.
I understand that, but just because it's like, lack of planning doesn't constitute an emergency, sometimes. You know, it's, it's just, it's time consuming, yes. Maybe you want it, you know, it is time consuming, and I'm sorry, but it has to be done.
And other people's money were used to purchase all those materials. I, I just don't want to go rushing around and throwing away other people's money.
Great. Mr. Tursi?
Just for, just for clarification and being hopeful here, you're not looking for that for the next agenda, are you, with the start of school? Because it's going to take staff time to go in there and inventory.
If we have someplace to store this...
Can you give me a couple agendas, at least, to get it on there?
Yeah, as long as we have someplace to put it out of the way, and we can move on. Okay. Budget. School board member to present the budget. Did I miss something?
Steve.
I did miss B. I'm taking some cold medicine. I'm not feeling real good, sorry, guys. School district attorney for the SAU withdrawal planning committee, Mr. Tursi, take it away.
Ralph or Steve?
Ralph or Steve?
Planning, planning committee.
Yeah, they, um, you know.
What?
The planning committee, um, and it discussed and believed that it would be in the best interest of, of everyone, the planning committee, the school district, to send the attorney down to Conket with, uh, a couple members of the planning committee to go before the, uh, New Hampshire Board of Education. So that would be a cause that the board would have to approve, but we do believe that going before the Board of Education, it would be in the best interest to have the school district attorney present.
Mr. Tursi?
And also to review the plan prior to submitting to the board. So basically, two, two times, it would be the attorney, one to review the plan prior to submitting to the state board, and then their time attending the, the meeting.
Bonnie?
Are they going in the best interest of Wakefield, or the best interest of Milton, or the district altogether?
Wakefield.
Just don't look at me like that. I'm asking.
Well, it's a legitimate question, you know.
We're going to be there.
Well, I understand that you are going to be there, but the attorney is going for Wakefield.
For Wakefield, correct.
Answer, legal questions.
The Wakefield matter.
Okay. We need to make a motion on that?
To approve the funds, right?
For the funds.
I should say, prove legal fees for moving the court.
And I'm going to ask, but I probably know the answer. You guys don't have a approximate cost?
No.
No?
No, it depends on how long the meeting goes.
Right, I know. And I just had to throw it out there, Steve.
All right, I'm, well, I'll...
And we only made it very clear that the attorney's only to review our plan, he's not to revise it or make changes to it in any way.
Okay.
Just to make sure...
It's just for him to read and to be prepared to go to...
Had to comply with the hours, I think.
I'll make a motion to, um, expend the money for the school district attorney to review the planning committee's plan for withdrawal and to attend the, uh, meeting before the New Hampshire Board of Education.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Full business.
Budget seat.
Oh, man. Sorry, guys. I wasn't drinking before the meeting. I really wasn't. Oh, man, sorry guys, I wasn't drinking before the meeting, I really wasn't. Budget, the school board member to present the, to the budget committee this year, I know we didn't have one do it, one do one last year, so I think it's probably a good idea to have one of us stand up there and present it. Go ahead.
This was, um, this was put on the agenda, it came out of a meeting, uh, that when we were setting our budget schedule, um, with the chairs of both boards and the chairs of both budget committees, and, um, it's, it was a, it was a comment or a request made by the chair of the budget committee as to, because they're going to be a school board member, presents the budget to the budget committee this year, similar to like what Bonnie did two years ago, as really the main spokesperson for the budget, who would that be?
Was it Steve last year?
I, I thought back in March we had, uh, as far as, um, appointing members to committees and stuff like that, I'm pretty sure we had made a motion to have pretty much a reciproc- I mean, um, the same thing that we had the previous year, meaning that the only change no more was that do it be the alternate.
Right, right, but they're talking about at the actual, the actual hearing is what they're asking, like Bonnie did it one year and she presented and she answered questions and, and I think last year the bulk of it was taken over by Mr. Tursey and our attorney, and I think what the budget committee is asking is, are we gonna get back to having this, the actual school board member, um, present? Yeah.
It was from, it was from the beginning of our meetings with the budget committee, this board member was the spokesperson.
Spokesperson.
For the budget, um, compared to like last year, I presented the budget to the budget committee throughout the whole process, so this would be a board member that presents the budget, because it is your budget, to the budget committee throughout the whole process and it delivered.
Ralph?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Brown, do, did the school board member present to the committee? Would we have the way for us to say?
I already, um.
Well, I, I.
So, so the positioning question, and trying to nominate you, if you don't mind.
You gonna renominate me to the same position?
Well, are you gonna be the spokesperson for the actual hearing, Steve?
I guess that's, that's what the budget committee wants, I don't think, you know, I don't know how it got off that Mr. Tursey, I mean, I never asked him to present it, but that's just the way it went.
It didn't hurt, didn't Mr. Tursey do that?
No, it certainly didn't, but, um.
I don't think we heard of Steve doing it.
Well, no, I, I'm not saying, I'm, that's great, somebody's gonna actually step up and do it, I think that's wonderful, Steve? You, are you opposed to this?
No.
Okay.
Except you haven't been a second.
I know.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Bonnie's opposed.
All right, I'm trying to get back on the gen- on the agenda here, guys, sorry. Old business. Facilities improvements, I asked Mr., do you wanna do it or can I just talk? I asked Mr. Tursey to have Mr. Williams come here tonight to give us an update on what he's been doing over the summer.
Yep, um, our big project was the roofing, which is done, um, we had asked the thirty-five-hundred dollars at the end of the year to fix our leak that we had taken care of, and they did find, um, an area that they think might have been the problem area, so we're hoping with all the torrential rains and everything like that, nothing's leaked, so we'll see what it, um, fall and spring for us in the snow log, um, so that was LSG that did that, um, did a great job, curving is in the process right now, Pat Stevens is still there doing that, and, um, that should be taken care of here, next couple days.
Gonna be done by the first day of school, yes?
Yep, 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 he's been right at it, um, the sheds with the garage doors, I got all those framed out, um, I was on vacation last week, so it was the week before that, and, um, I'm just waiting for the garage doors to come in and they'll all be hung, so all that's gonna take care of it, um, Mr. Phillips up at the Carroll County House of Corrections, I've called him twice, um, right at the beginning of the week here, I haven't heard back, we're running out of time for inmates to be around here, so that's gonna be something that falls on myself during the season, so I hope you run out and paint a wall, have my watch and do stuff like that, um, all the floor's been done, building's in pretty good shape right now, um, we've waxed all the hallways, the gyms, got all the rugs done, um, did some touch-up painting around the area that we needed to do, uh, my next project next week is gonna be to change out some ceiling tiles, move some books.
You're gonna move some books, Wes?
Yeah, move some like that, so.
Ralph?
Just the gable line on this shed right here, anybody put an overhang on that gable end yet?
Bringing it over, because soffit.
Well, these soffits, I'm, is there a box sofa out there to go away from the gable end, otherwise that, the way that, I, I looked at it last week, maybe the week before, and the roof is just kinda rolling down all the way to the side.
Just did what they did on all the other stuff.
If it had a little extension, we'd keep all the water stuff off that, it would help maintain the.
You're trying to put a sofa on it if you have one.
Well, this, this side has it, the overhang is a standard building feature.
It's a torn apart shed that came off a piece of property over there, and I was trying to keep the cost down for the tax base as much as possible, that, um, I thought it had helped with doing it, it was being a still for night.
Thank you, Joe, anything else?
It's all good.
Got anything else for us?
Um, pretty much about it, um, Corey has been in all summer long doing stuff, fields and all contract stuff, but, um, pretty much everything's been going all summer.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Tursey, facilities truck.
Yeah, I requested to put this on the agenda, 'cause, um, Mr. Williams has been using his truck for years now, um, to move furniture and other various jobs around the, uh, around the school and around campus here, and unfortunately, while using his truck working, um, he did damage his vehicle, and, um, I feel that, uh, we should pay for the damage of that vehicle, because he was using it as a work truck, and I'd be looking, taking those monies out of what we put in for a trailer in the, in the, um, in the operating budget to repair Mr. Williams' truck, uh, and from this point forward, we will be, um, renting a vehicle if we need to move any, any equipment or anything, so he's not damaging his own vehicle, and I also, um, think we should prompt the conversation during the budget cycle about either purchasing or finding a Wakefield School District facilities vehicle, particularly as the conversation continues about being your own SAU, you're gonna need a facilities truck, and now's the time to start talking about that, because Mr. Williams, with my support, I agree with this a hundred percent, is not gonna be using his truck anymore.
Ralph?
I thought we had approved some monies for a trailer prior to this last budget running out of June thirty, we had talked about twenty-five-hundred dollars or something like that, that was somebody paying one from the trade class.
Fifteen hundred, that was for this fiscal year, January July first.
Really? It seemed like it was an important thing to have decided before June thirty.
As part of the budget, suppose, you might be thinking it was our, during our conversation around budget cuts for this year, because we originally had, believe I did, for twenty-five-hundred and we minimized it down to fifteen hundred, but that wouldn't go into effect until July first, those monies.
Steve, did you have a question?
Well, I, I did, but, so we're not gonna be buying a trailer at all now, is that the plan?
We, we won't purchase a trailer because we won't have a vehicle to pull a trailer around, because Joe, the intent was to have a trailer for Joe's truck, and, you know, that's not gonna be the case right now, and I feel that Joe shouldn't have to pay for the repair of his vehicle, um, and that was the line that I'd be able to take the repairs out of, because we are looking at a tight budget this year.
But if we had the trailer, it wouldn't happen. I'm, I'm, we'll have to reduce the minutes and tape, because I'm pretty sure we had the discussion to make sure that the trail was brought before June thirty, to chew up some monies that was left over and the facilities line and.
No, it was only a bunch of budget cuts.
Yeah.
Because we went back and forth actually on the cost, Joe, it's when we were trying to cut some money, some money out of the budget.
Bonnie?
And the trail is passe and there's no vehicle to pull it, he shouldn't be using a private vehicle, we wouldn't expect one of us to use our private vehicle with our employee.
I'm really sorry, your truck at the end, Joe.
Yeah, yeah, it happens, but it's first new truck I've ever bought.
Just accept my apologies, I am sorry.
Steve?
What did we do before, Joe?
Same thing, private vehicle.
Okay, she used his truck.
Yeah, she used his truck.
Which wasn't right either.
So.
I believe Dave used his vehicle before that.
So should we put it in, in the budget, put it in the budget discussions?
I don't see why we can't pay for the damages, but. No insurance on the truck?
I insurance, property liability trust will only pay five-hundred dollars a day.
Do you don't have an insurance policy at the school that takes care of damaged vehicles?
No, our, our current insurance provider provided a five-hundred dollar deductible for the use of a personal vehicle during work, so we've already gotten that five-hundred dollars, the remaining cost for the repair of Joe's truck is gonna come out of that trailer line.
How much is the, can I ask what happened?
It, it, the bumper got dinged and got pushed up into the rear corner, it was eighteen-hundred and thirty-six dollars.
What was the instance though? What was it doing, you?
I was cleaning out all the stuff out back, taking it to the top, pick the top up.
Any driving wasn't due?
I mean, I guess that's what I'm wondering, if you're.
It was, it was taken out, yeah.
So to prompt the board on that as well, because I'd like to bring up more in our budget discussion, potential purchase of a vehicle or how we could obtain a vehicle for facilities on campus.
Joe, it's just tax paid money.
Just, I, I don't know, it seems like, you know, for one, I mean, I could see if you had multiple buildings, sure, but.
Right, but we won't have any, we won't have a vehicle to use at all, are we gonna rent a vehicle when we need stuff moved around? We need to obviously think about doing something, I don't think it'll fit in the trunk, truck, trunk of that car we got sitting at the SAU.
Yeah, we could put a trailer in.
Well, that one, good, yeah, now you're thinking.
There you go, Joe, you don't even fit in my car, but.
Yeah, don't worry about, we have.
Got a problem for you.
Just take out the front seat, you can sit in the backseat. I, I mean, it's a lot of mon-, you know, well, depending on how much you pay for a truck, but, I mean, if you don't pay a lot, you're not gonna get much of a truck, but the, you know, I mean, I agree and I appreciate, you know, the help Joe's done, you know, using his truck, but, you know, I don't know, it's, I mean, I guess if you had two or three buildings, maybe, but just, I don't know.
No? Oh, okay, okay.
Judy?
Does the town have a truck up to bid right now?
That's what I was thinking as well, does the town have one now?
I don't wanna have something, quick question.
They, they might, because they're always doing that, so we could always check that as well.
I think they've got a bid on one now, I think I saw it.
Requesting bids on it?
They, they are requesting bids, looking good.
Nathan, have Nathan call the town and see what, the town got a.
See if we can pick up one of them.
Something?
For this year? Because they have put out the bid for this year, right now, where will we get the money to purchase a truck?
If it's fifteen-hundred dollars, fifteen-hundred dollars, that might be the right bid.
One of the fifteen-hundred dollars is going to regain Mr. Williams' truck. Right. Well, check it out anyway, maybe they'll.
Give you a line of credit.
Give us a line of credit, yes, they'll give us a line of credit, check it out anyway, it, it can't hurt.
Donate it or just swap it over.
I would.
Taxpayers dollars have paid for it, so.
I would go before the selectmen and ask for that, and I would show up myself, just to say, hey, guys.
We have a couple of dictionaries, we can swap them.
I'm thinking we could barter.
Some dictionaries, geography books.
Everyday math.
Everyday math. Okay.
Sure there's something.
Second grade classroom update.
I just wanna give the board an update, we've, um, we're in the process of moving, um, the furnitures into the second grade classroom, there's a nomination senior for second grade classroom teacher, so we're set to go with an additional grade, too, um, we're able to, um, utilize furniture that we currently have here, there were a lot of chairs that were in the shed over here that were being put into the second grade classroom, as well some of those chairs I believe went to town hall as well as the police station, so we're, uh, on, on point with having that second grade up and running for the start of school.
Great. Parking lot update.
Third grade.
Good question, are we looking on the third grade, we all set to go?
Yep.
Okay. Parking lot update.
Parking lot update, um, we were looking to obtain a signed deed for the original owner of a small parcel called Parcel Three, um, and with the help of Mr. Fogg and our attorney, um, we're in the process currently of getting that deed signed with the original owner, so we're hoping that that'll, that'll be complete within the next couple weeks, and once we're able to get that deed signed, um, then we can move forward with White Mountain Survey to kind of finalize the plan and move forward, and, you know, plan that could go to the planning, uh, planning board going up.
In terms of budget?
I'm not sure at this point, uh, depends on how quickly we can get that deed signed. It's gonna be tight, if at all.
And Mr. Fogg knows it?
You can speak to it, Ralph, you, the process.
I, he does live it, he decided to flip over to the world tomorrow, and, um, he just believes in that, but conversations I had regarding stuff in the past, he was spot on, his knowledge was there, I've had conversations since talking with Mr. Shimmel and him down, maybe his current condition allows him that good memory of the past, anyway, he's business people that were at Clipper Hall that think that they need to step in and make decisions for him, he does have a brother that, um, should be contacted, so it's, it's just inch by inch, and, um, he made the comment that he does not wish to be in the way of, uh, school district moving forward, and he has, he has no intention of taking anything, he is not an endor. He's a.
Can you help on that?
We're hoping that'll be able to move forward, I'm very sure.
I'll look at it.
He's an enjoyable guy to play on, if you have a chance to.
Is he? Do you have a minute, go visit him?
Shall we talk about you?
No, I, I.
Correspondence? To the manifest? Trying to keep in order. Two separate, all together? Did, did it gather, I broke the stack. Did, did it gather? I broke the stack.
Six ninety-six, one battery. Six batteries and that one sixteen.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Howard, after six rhetorical batteries.
It's providing, yeah, it's not like you need to go by a cord. Breeze Buster?
Oh, I, I knew that. I got that down.
Breeze Buster, really? What is that name? Really? That's.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's grease, well, it's like this, cooking and stuff like that, right?
Kitchen traps.
Oh, okay. All right, really? Hi Nate, thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks, Joe.
Thank you, Joe.
Thanks, Joe.
You're welcome.
Have a good night.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. The co-op, the co-op, okay. You're a good idea. Really?
Oh, so Joe doesn't have his old truck, he's got a brand new truck.
Yeah, it's, it's a brand new truck.
I see.
He's not here, I'm sure it's my source, brand new, beautiful.
I didn't know if it was a brand new.
Yeah, that's what he said, it was a very versatile one. It's, yeah, it's pretty nice. You doing okay?
We are, we, we're down to pretty much close to, to this budget. We are keeping an eye on everything, cause I mean, I haven't seen, but I'm seeing a landscaping company, that's not how to, so. We, we need to, we don't have much money to expand on anything, so.
We'll be keeping an eye, very close eye on throughout all year.
Okay, cause like I said, I'm looking at a landscape and comes in, I don't know. So we thought.
What's the name?
Why do we?
Hillside.
Hillside.
Hillside?
That was first bricklayer's system.
What?
It's first bricklayer's system from last year. It was an FY fifteen though. Was to get ready for the closing up the script list for the season, or actually opening for the season. But it was actually done in April.
Always a need to go make sure we keep an eye on.
Oh, yeah.
And uh, we, you know, people getting approvals before any new expenditure, you know, something comes up and.
You know, unanticipated expense, though you're referring to?
Yeah, well, I mean, well, we keeping an eye on it because we don't, we don't have, I mean, some, and yeah, unanticipated emergency or, you know. Someone may be purchasing something that maybe they thought someone else hadn't, and you know, and someone did, I mean, I just. Well, we're right down to the nickels and pennies.
Yes.
Gonna have to keep a real close eye on this, so.
Is this expenditure for the math conference to help certify the person as of for nomination? For the math interventionist? It's a bill for a mileage to a math conference on new perspectives on learning? In Connecticut, New Lenning, Connecticut?
Studying a teacher.
Well, it's, no, it's a, it's para, that's why I'm asking.
You know? H, S A is not really an H school or something, but. I signed up for a meeting um, last night, and I can't get this, like, is that a forty-five dollar expenditure?
Yeah, yeah.
You signed up for a meeting?
I didn't think, I, I didn't think about this many days, but I thought it was a month ago and I hit and just click here to register.
We don't like, you know. We don't like, just let you take another one?
Then we'll do again.
I'm sure they had a certificate already with the goals.
Thanks for sharing.
Why are we paying milk to that for another school?
Yeah.
Anyone specific?
Dover.
Eight sixteen twenty-nine.
Paying milk?
Four.
Says Dover.
What's your check number?
Uh, twenty-four oh twenty. I'm sorry, uh, one four three nine four.
Yeah.
Deposit bid to Wakefield and it should've gone to Milton.
Yeah, it should've gone to, it was a.
Is what it says right here.
Deposit for Milton, but.
Yeah, he got deposit into the wrong account.
It was actually the deposit for Wakefield.
Oh, okay, okay.
You're on fourteen four hundred, which is?
I am, um, oh, either way.
No.
Knowing will go vision and blindness?
Yeah.
We, it's.
It's for, it's for specifics to get.
Okay, yeah.
One one, one four, one.
One four four four, one four four, one oh.
Do aluminum racks for one hundred and sixty-two, number ten cans, credit for a trade and.
Warmer.
Okay, okay.
See what, uh, we bought from Pearson? Buying programs or not?
Gamesbook? Basic complete check.
The whole thing at Gamesbook?
Yep.
They already, they come out with a new one, every?
We have to update it.
We have to update it, it's license.
I like really good stuff. Really good stuff. Sharpen the pencils.
Really?
Pre sharpened?
Pre sharpened? Sharpen their own.
The triangle training, that's what. Like don't fit in any sharpener you'll ever find. Now you got acceptance of the world without a previous investment. They're just really cool.
And it's for six months, but it's still.
Are you looking at the water?
Yeah, I mean, even though it's six months, it just seems, you know. Wakefield thirty-five, one, six months.
November thirtieth to the twenty-fifth of.
Yeah.
Is six fifty-nine, and then. Two thousand, these are two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen, let me add that, twenty-seven eighty-six forty. And then fifty-one. We have three separate wells, three separate connections.
No. Probably have to turn on, shut off.
The employee is due, I should milk the other account before. We should call and verify that she's not primary on that account.
How do you look at that?
I just wanna see it, so we should apply all the percent.
Almost done.
Thank you. Is there a small that I was supposed to be?
Yes, sir.
And I'll, I'm gonna lay off the date for.
How it's burning, I can't see.
Yeah, it's working. But it's looking at its own hours, but.
Three in the morning.
Mm-hmm. So. It's been. Oh, that's motion to approve the data files.
Oh, David?
Hi.
Hi.
Alex, Steve?
Both.
I'm Jared.
Yes.
At this point, if you mind, I'd like to make a suggestion for future meetings.
Mm-hmm.
Run this by the board, see what you think. Think about it, maybe a different process for the manifest review and approval. Maybe post um, the meeting starting at, to review the manifest uh, five o'clock. And then the, the regular board meeting starting at five thirty. So that we can have thirty minutes of manifest review and approval. That way there, the public can decide as to whether they wanna come and sit through the manifest review and approval. And then they would have the opportunity to make that decision. They could come at five thirty for the regular school board agenda. They're not sitting there while you go through the manifest, if it's not of interest to them compared to the regular agenda. It's just something to think about. If it's not of interest to them compared to the regular agenda, is there something to think about?
What is good idea?
We used to do that.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know why it's off, everything is different.
Different board, different times.
As long as it's not a mystery, it's a non-public meeting.
I'll still be filming. I think I'll still be filming. You don't need a motion, don't you have any consensus on that?
No, it's just, yeah, just consensus, and it would change the posting a little bit. We're not wording on the posting, however, it would, it would give the public an option as to whether they wanted to come during that time or not. The regular agenda would begin at five-thirty.
Sounds good.
Kind of like the old agenda where it's at. You choose to be ahead of fifteen minutes later after you do the stack, instead of...
This would be, this would be established, so there'd be thirty minutes for the review.
That'd be great.
Regular agenda starts.
I said there should be refreshments at that time. I said, "You know what happens when I hate their brownies?" That's not good.
What brownies?
Got you.
Just regular brownies. Well, he said what brownies? The way he said it. Public comment? Sheen?
I'm just wondering if the trailer was such an issue that you needed to have one. Why wasn't it purchased right after July first? Maybe the accident wouldn't have happened with the truck, if you would have the trailer. But why wasn't it bought? Budget started July one.
I honestly don't know.
And I guess my other question is, I appreciate Joe taking his private time to come in here and speak to you. But where's the facilities manager that we're paying to do that? And why isn't he up here helping Joe get his school ready, like he always used to? You would come in here and see him putting ceiling tiles up and doing work even in the building. So, I guess number one, why wasn't he here tonight giving you your report? What are we paying him for if he's not doing what he's supposed to? Either these meetings are in that building.
Just another reason for withdrawal, too.
I perfectly understand that, but if we're not gonna get any service out of it for the next year, why are we paying for it? I think that we should...
That's a very valid point.
Our share of the position physically in Wakefield.
Right, I agree.
Rob?
Isn't the facilities director driving a truck down Milton?
It's a Milton vehicle.
It's a Milton School District vehicle? Used by the SAU employee, but not for the partner in the SAU.
Purchased for the, Milton School District purchased the truck. Because it maintains the grounds, it does the plowing and all of that as well.
That's really good. We find out how often he is here?
Try to put on an extra gender, please.
It'll be discussed during the budget side of the line.
Well, in the meantime, I'd really like to know...
Why would we pay for him this year if he's not...
So, now, we're already paying.
Right, so I want to know how often he's here, and put it on the next agenda.
You shouldn't have to wait till budget, if we're already paying him for the show.
Jane? What information regarding the agenda? Uh, I understand, from reading the policy, that for the public to request an agenda item needs to be in writing, submitted to the superintendent prior to Thursday before the meeting.
During time?
During time, yes.
During time.
Thursday prior.
In writing, is email sufficient?
Email is sufficient, yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. All right, we're gonna go into non-public? We're going to non-public, so it's R S A ninety-one, A, three, two, C, and B. All in favor?
All aye.
All one aye?
Zero aye. Three aye?
All aye.
Do you want to be just a minute?
Yeah.
Yeah, correct.
You did?
Well, just, just for a concert, it wasn't, I didn't...
Oh, you didn't learn?